Toujours, toujours, chaque, chaque on compte. Good morning, good morning everyone, bonjour to it us. This part of the Transit Commission meeting is an important time for us to recognize brave, generous and inspiring OC Transpo employees who go above and beyond the call of duty to help others in need. Today, we will recognize three individuals from the months of May, June and July. Cette partie de la réunion de la Commission de Transpar en commun est un moment important où nous soulignons les gestes courageux, généreux et inspirants d'employés d'OC Transpo qui vont aider là de leur fonction pour aider des gens dans le besoin. Aujourd'hui, nous rendrons hommage à trois personnes pour les mois de mai, juin et juillet. This acknowledgement is part of the Transsecure program which is a well-established community protection initiative. OC Transpo employees look out for the safety of all community members and as a result become the eyes and ears of the community while driving and operating the transit service. They notify emergency services when required and assist individuals who are in distress. On May tenth, bus operator Alan was driving Route sixty-two in the west end of the city when he noticed a twelve-year-old boy traveling alone on his bus. The boy appeared lost and disoriented. Concerned for the child's safety, Alan reported this to the Transit Operations Control Center. A transit supervisor and a transit special constable were dispatched and met the bus at Bay Shore Station. Upon arrival, it was discovered that the boy had been reported missing to the Ottawa Police Service earlier that afternoon. Police arrived and soon after took custody of the boy and were able to reunite him with his family. Thanks to Alan's observation and quick actions, this situation was resolved quickly and compassionately. In the early hours of June five, bus operator Mandy was completing Route eighteen at Salem Ross Station when a male customer approached her bus looking for help. He advised her that another male customer was harassing him on the platform. Mandy immediately invited the man who was being harassed onto her bus and called the Transit Operations Control Center for assistance. Special constables were quickly dispatched to the scene and were able to conduct their investigation and deal with the suspect. Thanks to Mandy's intuition and keen sense of observation, a potentially dangerous situation was diffused for a customer in need. Bus operator Kyle was operating Route eighty-two late at night on July twenty-first when he observed a female passenger aboard a bus. Kyle noticed the passenger appeared to be heavily intoxicated and had a young child with her. Kyle immediately contacted the Transit Operations Control Center. Soon after, special constables and the Ottawa Police met Kyle on the route to ensure the child and female passengers' safety. The female passenger was taken to the hospital for an assessment. Thanks to Kyle's fast reaction, a child was kept safe from a potentially dangerous situation. And thank you Kyle and for Andy and Mandy and Alan for being here with us today and for being the eyes and ears of our community. I would like to ask Alan, Mandy and Kyle to join me here at the podium for a moment, please. As Chair of the Transit Commission, it's my honor to recognize you today for your standing service. En tant que président de la Commission de Transpar en commun, j'ai aujourd'hui l'honneur de souligner vos services exceptionnels. Merci beaucoup. Well, good morning again, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Transit Commission meeting of September nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen. There has obviously been some news that has come out since the agenda for the meeting was established and there has been some interest to discuss certain issues of that news. I want to remind the Transit Commission that we do not have direct authority over the Light Rail project and our authority extends simply to the operating of the transit service and as well for transit members and for those in attendance to remember that we do not have authority over the design of bus routes. That authority has been delegated to Mr. Manconi and his team by City Council and only City Council can lift that authority. With that in mind, Councillor Kakish has procedural motion to add an item to the agenda.
Thank you, Chair. That the Transit Commission approved the addition of an item to today's agenda pursuant to subsection eighty-nine-three of Procedure by Law two thousand and sixteen dash three seven-seven to permit a discussion of OC Transpo's fall service changes in light of the announcement of the additional LRT delay.
Is this, Kerry? Kerry, thank you very much. Are there any declarations of interest? No? Confirmation of the minutes thirty from June twenty-eight, two thousand and eighteen? Kerry, thank you very much. Item number one is the status update for Transit Commission motions and inquiries for the period ending of twelve September. Is this item received? Received, thank you very much. Item number two is the operating capital budgets for Q two and there is a presentation on this, so I will hand it over to Mr. Manconi and his team.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, members of committee. I'm going to turn it over to Pat shortly to talk to you about both ridership and revenue. The forecast of the projected year-end, it's a projection, a deficit of about eight hundred thousand dollars represents us being off by point two-six percent off of the total five-hundred million dollar budget. So I just want to put that in perspective in terms of the scope of that. In terms of the news, the good news is that unlike many other properties across North America, our ridership is up slightly. That is very, very good, given all the change and all of the challenges that our riders have been experiencing. And again, I want to take the opportunity to thank them for that because I know how difficult it is for them and for you folks out there receiving feedback from them. So ridership is up slightly, I'll get Pat to talk about that. And then I'm also, he's going to then walk you through the revenue shortfall, explaining the delta because that number, if you've looked at the table, jumps out. And while that's a shortfall, it's also aligned to some of the ridership issues and people making good fare choices or fare choices that suit their needs in that regard. So Pat, over to you.
Thanks, John. Mr. Chair, the first part of what I'll talk about is the ridership level. In the first half of this year, we carried forty-eight and a half million customer trips. That is one percent higher than we did in the first half of last year, so very slightly up. It's also half a percent higher than budget. When we look at a year-to-year comparison, a twelve-month-to-twelve-month comparison, which we do in order to remove any effects of seasonality, we can say that over the last twelve months, ending at the end of June, we carried ninety-five point nine million customers, which is zero-point-eight percent higher than we had in the twelve months preceding that. So turning now to the fare revenue, you'll have seen in the Q two financial report that while ridership is up, revenue is below the budgeted level. And this results from a different demographic makeup of our ridership base, our ridership group than we had, than we had predicted when we established the budget. Specifically, we're carrying more young people who are paying youth fares and we're carrying fewer adults paying a full fare. If you look at the table that's on the screen now, you can see that in the first half of the year, we had budgeted to carry almost, to sell two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand adult monthly passes, we sold two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand. Youth monthly passes, we had predicted we would sell about eighty-nine-thousand, in fact, we sold almost ninety-four-thousand. You can then see that seniors passes, very, very close to budget, community passes and access passes together, very close to budget, Equipass, the discounted pass for people with low incomes, we've sold more of those than we expected. So these indicate that we are, you know, the Equipass certainly shows that there's been an improvement in mobility for people with low income and the youth numbers being up show that there's young people who are, who are using the service to travel to school or for other reasons. When you look at the lower numbers, we haven't broken them out here, you can see that single ride fares paid by Epers are slightly below budget, single ride fares paid by cash are slightly below budget, indicating that our customers primarily still use monthly passes. Other fare types is higher than budget by about a million dollars. The other fare types include child's fares, day passes, but the largest number in there is the U passes that we sell through the universities and colleges and those are, are up from the budget level. So when you add all of that together, the budget to this for the first half of the year was that we would bring in ninety-six million dollars in fare revenue, but in fact, we've brought in ninety-three million dollars in fare revenue.
Thank you, Mr. Schrimmjer. Mr. Chair, that concludes the overview. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manconi. Mr. Schrimmjer, I didn't hear the first number, you said the twelve-month-to-twelve-month number was ninety-five point nine, but I didn't catch, you said the twelve-month-to-twelve-month number was ninety-five point nine million. I didn't catch though the first number for the first half of this year.
For the first half of this year, we carried forty-eight point five million customer trips.
Forty-eight point five, okay.
Which is one percent higher than what we'd carried for the same period last year.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much, Councillor Leeper, please.
So the preface to the presentation indicated that, you know, people are making good choices about fares and that we are seeing a reduction in fare revenue as a result of that. But one of the numbers that really jumps up here is you only brought in ninety-five percent of the adult monthly pass revenue that you had forecast. Intensification is proceeding, if intensification is going to be sustainable, we need adults to go on transit, we need adults overall to switch to transit in bigger numbers in order to alleviate the congestion problems we're experiencing in the city. How can a reduction, especially a relatively significant one of five percent, how can that be a good news story for the city?
I caution against drawing any conclusions about citywide transit ridership as we are in such a heavy period of construction and service disruption from the construction leading up to the opening of the Light Rail line. The adult ridership will be more concentrated than any of the other groups in travel during rush hours to, from and through downtown where the service impacts of the construction projects, several of them, are most heavily concentrated. You'll remember that we've talked before that about two-thirds of all of the variability in the service we operate, all of the, any unreliability in any trips originates with construction and traffic downtown. So I think the longer-term characteristics of how people choose to use transit will really be seen later on after the train opens and the bus routes are no longer operating in such heavy traffic downtown.
So I've been talking with residents and we were out chatting with residents about transit this morning and the adults with whom we're speaking are, they're buying cars, they're finding that the delays are moving them off of traffic, they're making long-term choices to leave the transit system. There are people, and I think these numbers bear it out, who are more vulnerable, who are lower income, who have, who are younger and may not have cars, who are using the transit system. But I'm very alarmed by the drop in adult ridership, particularly the passes. The news that LRT is going to be delayed, I'm hearing from residents, is, is leading to a lack of confidence in transit on the part of riders who should be switching over to the transit system. How are we going to win those adult riders back? And it's not just peak traffic that I'm interested in, the long-term twenty-year future of this city is going to depend on adults choosing to use transit for everyday trips around the city. That's one of the promises of LRT to begin with. How are we going to win those adult riders back?
Mr. Chair, it's a very good question. I'll start off by sharing with you that Canadian Urban Transit Association had a full day of sessions here, I know Councillor Wilkinson was there. There's a ridership study that's been undertaken across Canada to look at everything that you're raising and much, much more, Councillor, because everybody is looking for that silver bullet as to why ridership is down. Ridership is down across the board. In North America, I think there's only three that it's up slightly and one of them doesn't have T and Cs in operation and they're monitoring that very, very closely soon as it will become legalized in that community which is over in Vancouver, things shift. There are a lot of people speculating as to its Uber, its intensification, it's, every study I'm seeing come out does not give the evidence as to what it is and in fact, it says it could be a bunch of different factors. I would respectfully disagree with you that those numbers are reflective of a lack of confidence in the LRT coming online.
It's a pain.
Certainly, like I said, I disagree with that perception or that comment, that's not, there's no evidence to substantiate that that I've seen. And, you know, there are some that would argue that intensification, which is a good thing, means like New York City where they're converting commercial buildings into residential properties, people no longer need to take their, their system. And you've seen the many articles about the state of disrepair in some jurisdictions and so forth that's causing people not to use public transit. So it's a bunch of things, there's other modes, you've invested in cycling, you've invested in walking and so forth. So what we're showing you today is there's the breakdown of choices that people are making. And the QDA study, which I think is online, if not will certainly get it to you, also reminds everybody the cost of a car and the carrying cost of a car. So I think people carefully weigh that before they start to invest eight to nine thousand dollars in carrying a cost of a car versus using public transit if it's convenient, accessible and reliable. So I understand your point, it's all those things and I'm just cautioning on whether or not somebody has the evidence to say that monthly, adult monthly passes are down because of X, Y or Z. We don't have that, that, and if I did, I'd share it with you.
Well, let's get that then. Let's go and do a proper rigorous price elasticity study that includes public opinion research polling to get us an in-depth look at what the Ottawa numbers are.
We did do that, we presented that to you, we brought you elasticity, we brought you the expert, I believe it was Councillor Neusbaum that asked for it and we brought that, we actually presented that to QDA. That drove QDA to be doing some of the work that they're doing right now because everybody's struggling with ridership across the country. And I, from my perspective, the fact that with all the disruptions we've had and we're up slightly, that's not a bad situation to be in where some jurisdictions are down significantly.
Good, thanks, John. Thank you very much, Councillor Leeper, Councillor Agarwal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Where does U pass fit into this? Is that, is that in the youth monthly pass or where's the U pass?
The U pass figures are contained in the line at the bottom that says other fare types.
So, and just putting it out there, some of our U pass users, can you tell us where the U pass is up or down? Can you break that out?
I believe the U pass is up slightly. A reminder though that that, because it's a compulsory purchase for everyone attending the universities and the one college full-time, it varies according to registration at the universities and colleges and not according to transit ridership. So it's an indication of how much money we receive, but it's the college and university enrollment that changes.
No, no, I understand that, but it's still revenue dollars to us.
Yes, it is.
And I guess where I'm going with this is some of those U pass holders, a lot of those U pass holders are actually also adults. So they don't have a traditional adult pass, but they have a U pass.
That's correct, if they're, if they're full-time registered at the universities or the one college.
Okay, so now, we've heard the discussion back and forth, so we don't really have any answers to why we think it's down for adult riders as of yet. But this is for Q one, Q two. Do we have any idea, do we have any projections as to where we think we'll be by the end of the year? Because we're running a slight deficit now, do we have a sense of where we're going to be by the end of two thousand and eighteen?
There's a projection on page three of the report that shows that revenues are projected to be four-point-one million below budget at the end of the year.
Okay, so this, would we, would we then call this a trend since it's going to run through the whole year or is this a bleh?
Well, we're watching, there's two things we're watching, the ridership and we, we've been holding around zero and one percent and slightly below. So do we have a trend? I don't, I don't believe we have a trend yet and we are in a situation where there's a lot of changes going on for our riders, so we have to be careful with that. The revenue trend, based on the work that finance and ourselves did, that's the best we can do for year-end forecasts. The troubling part continues to be that nobody across Canada and the US can figure out what's going on with ridership. And so any person that's a CEO or a GM of a transit authority is not making a prediction that I've heard of, and I was with a bunch of them this week and I, I'm in that network and that's why I'm being very cautious about trends and forecasts. What we will know is once we open up the LRT and through the transportation master plan, within that following year, we're doing a comprehensive OD study which will then speak to what Councillor Leeper's talking about, use of modes, all modes, where are people taking the system from, to and so forth. That's what I'm anxiously waiting for. When we do that origin and destination study, and that's across Ottawa Gatineau with our partners, that starts to mine out some of the issues that Councillor Leeper was talking about earlier on.
Okay, and I guess the last, just a comment within question, one of the numbers I'm very pleased to bet is, is that we, we made a mistake on the Equipass and that we're actually getting more, more purchase on the Equipass. So I think that says that, that we made the right decision when we recommended to council that we go ahead with that and, you know, that's the number that, that I like the best up there and in terms of, so we've, that we've identified a need and we're answering that need. So I think in a, in a public transit system, that's our most, most important job. So, so thank you for that and the work that your team did on that, John, to, to get us those numbers on the Equipass. And, and again, as you say, it's difficult to, to track where we're going to be at the end of the year, so we'll just have to see how that works out. But again, congratulations on that piece because I think, you know, we really did recognize the need, you went out, you advertised, you got through all your various channels and we created an even better result than we thought we would get, so appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Councillor Agarwal, Councillor Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, we're all in the same wind, but one of the things I noticed at the conference yesterday, they talked about it, it was a generic city, countrywide study and let's point out, there's a lot of differences between communities and ours has got one special thing that nobody else has and that's a green belt. And that green belt has quite a big impact on our, our bus service because, like you recognize that about eighty percent of all the new residents in Ottawa last year were outside the green belt. Twenty-six point three percent of them were in our area, in the Canada-Stittsville area. And yet we didn't get much change in bus service and I think the same thing is true in, when we hear about it in Barhaven, which is the second busiest and then also even in Orleans, which not quite as many people there, but it's still a lot. So we're having a change in where people live and yet the system we've got is still geared very much towards moving people to downtown and to moving people within the green belt, core area of the green, inside the green belt, not even all of the areas, to, and moving them around more frequently. We brought in about eight or ten years ago, I know what was done to try to get more service there so more people would use buses where they had a shorter travel distance and more likely to use it. I hear, just as Councillor Leeper does, it's even worse than it, a lot of people say, I asked them if they'd use a bus, if they worked downtown somewhere, they say, no. So I asked them, why not? And they said, well, if I take the bus, it takes at least an hour and a half. And even with the traffic, which is horrendous, they can get there faster. And speed for people working is, time is quite a crucial thing for people traveling. Well, I know the study's going to happen after the Light Rail opens and that will help a lot because it will show these changes. We've also had huge growth in employment in the Canada-Stittsville area, primarily in the Canada business practice, all through the area, there's, there's high-tech out in different parts of Canada. And we're now getting huge, huge traffic jams there. It's the only place that I know of in the morning rush hour where they're backing up on McQueen's Way because they can't get off. I don't find that happening when I go downtown. And the result of that is tremendous congestion in cars and yet the bus service, which has been improved and more people are using it, they're caught in the same traffic. And yeah, so we're having a lot of, and the number of people who use it is fairly so and the ones that live in the Canada-Stittsville area don't use it because it takes an hour by bus to get there and if traffic isn't too bad, they can get there in ten minutes and even in rush hour, they can get there in certainly a lot less time. So I just wondering, is there some way that, well, it's only two years before you get the origin and destination study finished at least. And yet in the meantime, we have people that are getting jaded about the system and they say when they get say when they get the light rail open, far as our area is concerned, it's going to make it take longer to work, not less, because they have to do an extra transfer from what they were doing before. And other than that, the bus service is in the same as it is now. And I think we have a real psychological problem there to deal with. And just was wondering, and I know you do your best, I know that Pat has worked, he tries very hard to get bus service improvements when the population is there to use them, but he's not been provided the funding to do that. We know that when the light rail opens, they want to retire all the older buses and that is them for doing improvements in the service that are away from the rail system because that still has to exist. Not everybody is going to use the rail, not everybody's going in that direction. And it's a huge problem. It takes, it really requires a whole rethink of how we handle all the bus service in Ottawa. And I just want to know, how are you going to go about doing that? Is there some interim solutions that can help overcome the problem that we're having here? And I must say, I respect the fact that you've cut your costs down, well, that means we're going to have less service. So you're ending up the year not too badly off between, according to this, it's only a $815,000 in a very large budget deficit. So there's a lot happening there. But that's not really the most important thing. The most important thing is how are we going to be able to serve those people who are not getting good service now and who probably would use the bus if it could be reasonable time, because then they could get down to one car families instead of, people tell me we can't survive with one car in our family now. And that's wrong.
So I'll start with the budget management piece, just to assure members of commission, we are not doing the budget containment by cutting service, we're doing that through other things, staffing freezes, discretionary spending and so forth. So on service, Mr. Charter has every tool at his disposal and the last thing we do is cut service to do that. On the service to the growth areas, councillor, I don't disagree with you at all, you and I've chatted, I've chatted with every ward councillor out in the growth areas, councillor Blay, yourself, councillor Hager every day, councillor Hubley and councillor Cadry. Everyone in the growth area is telling me the same thing, they want more service, they want more service. And that's, I think, a really good challenge to have because that means our customers want to use transit. And again, this touches on what councillor Leeper was talking about. And the facts of the matter are that you need money to provide that additional service for those things. There is some growth expansion money in the long-range financial plan. You'll recall the treasurer, when she tabled that many months ago, identified, and I believe it's in 2019 and 2020, there is some bus expansion growth funds. And so that will be available to council next term of council if that's their priorities. In terms of improvements on the commute, when LRT opens, you do, we need to remind ourselves that the interlining that currently exists gets reduced. And that brings up reliability in some of those areas. And I just want to emphasize that because it's not just a suburban area. I believe councillor Flurry's in the room, he calls me every day about reliability on the route number 12, which affects him and councillor Neusbaum. And that's because those routes are interlined. So it is a very, you know, the decision was made years ago to go with an interlined system. That tipped you into a space of a very complicated system that once there's a traffic disruption, a snowstorm or a major construction project, the entire system gets affected. So the calls we're getting now about Canada and Barhaven about, you know, the LRT changes affecting all the routes, that's the interlining adjustments that we do in September. And that's, you know, we have a fragile system out right now because we have NTO highway closures and so forth. So I'm agreeing with everything you're saying, but on expansion and growth in suburban areas, that's about money. On commuting within the suburban areas, because you've been very clear with me on that, that requires funding and resources. Those are all council decisions that you need to make next term of council in terms of investments in that regard. The LRT will bring reliability up on the bus service because the buses in the east, west and south will predominantly stay there. They're not going to go into downtown and get mixed in with mixed traffic and do the interlining. But it will not, and I understand, because many of you have told me, that continues to be a tough sell, particularly with the delay of LRT. I understand the challenges out there. Our number one priority is to take care of you, the board of governors and the customers in this regard. And it's tough right now. We're in that tough part of this project. So, but on the growth area stuff, that's all about money.
And it's not just coming into town and across within Canada, it's also coming from in-town out to Canada. And I think with the 66 route that you put in to serve the military and it goes on and serves Canada and that area as well, has been, I think, a very useful service. And I think there's some things we can do psychologically to help people. That one is held up as well because Carling Avenue also gets blocked, like all roads into Canada in the morning are blocked. Going out's not so bad, going in is worse. And the result of that is all the bus routes that come get blocked. And that's why I think sometimes the early morning ones, people just came in, how come in the morning before they've had the interline, the very first route in the morning get blocked up? Well, it's because they can't get there to get started just much. And then in the afternoon one is unreal almost because they're all blocked up and sometimes don't come at all. And this is what really causes people to get really upset. And families have timing. They have kids in daycare, they have to get back for them. And if they're delayed, then they lose their places in the daycare, which becomes really crucial for as a family itself. So these are all the issues that they're dealing with. And they complain on Facebook a bit, I read, I see those, and I pass them sometimes on to Pat and he has worked with us to try to get some of them resolved. But I understand what you're saying, can't get them all fixed at once. What I really would like to see is that people understand the processes and the way to fix them. I don't think they really understand that. The people running an election in that area tell me, transportation and transit is the number one issue at the door and it's a big time. We don't have enough roads either to handle the bus traffic as well, which we need. And I have some ideas on that, which I'll pass on to you separately. But the, I think there are things we can do to make it better. And we don't want to have it happen that we stop the growth in the technology industry because people won't go there because the people can't get to work and that's already happening. And that's bad for the city of Ottawa because when they leave, they may not stay in Ottawa at all. And that is a real danger type of thing. And I'm seeing some of that already, we're trying to work around it, but it's something that, the transportation system as a whole, of which transit is a really crucial part, is part of that. So I think, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to raise this because I think it's something that, there's a whole psychology of how we work with it because it's affecting councillor Leeper, it's affecting yourself as a guy, in different ways, way across this whole city. And it was interesting talking to some of the people yesterday when I was at the workshop, was it yesterday or the day before? Monday, I think it was. And from different parts of Canada and what they're experiencing. And there's some, a couple that are doing some new things in Calgary and Edmonton that will help us a little bit in how we want to move forward on some of these things. But I really think the studies that are going to get out in two years are going to have to not just look at what we have now, but look at how we can have a system that is different, that will work. And that's going to take a lot of courage on the members of council because it means change. But, and we did that seven years ago, I think it's time to do it again. And the, people work is changing. Not as many people work downtown anymore. That's part of the issue. And I agree with the whole idea that the adult ones went down, this is the most crucial thing in this one, because it means that working people are saying, unless we actually have no choice and have to use transit, we'd rather not. And they're not all using bicycles and walking, some of them are, and that's okay. But the, anyway, that's enough of our rant today, but I just think, and I will be thinking on this either next year, I think that's going to break down, John.
Thank you very much councillor Wilkinson. Mr. McLeary and Mr. Scrimgeour, given the ridership information that's been presented and anticipation of a full OD study which will come as part of the TMP, how easy or difficult would it be for OC Trans to understand and present that information on where those changes or where that shortfall is? Is it during rush hour? Is it off-peak? Is it in the inner part of the city? Is it in the suburbs through either our counters or taps? How involved would that process be and how long would something like that take?
It would be a substantial piece of work. Some of those questions you're asking could be answered by looking at presto tap data. We'd be able to see generally which areas of the city are receiving fewer presto taps. We wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend getting very focused on a particular, on a narrow time band or on a particular area to make comparisons of this type because, because the numbers would be small, the sample size would be, would be small. It would be hard to make conclusions about where people are getting off those buses.
Sure.
So we'd be able to look at the residential areas, predominantly in the morning, the more central areas in the afternoon and through the day. We did comment a few months ago on something like this, because I believe the question was asked, are we seeing any effects of Uber lift and taxis on transit ridership? And we had found by looking at changes in presto taps that it appeared that if there was any effect, it was, it was happening on, in the late evening. So we can have a look at that and see what's doable. As for timing, I think it would probably be, you know, mid-19 to get enough staff time on it to draw some proper conclusions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Crewe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of quick comments. Certainly understanding councillor Leeper and councillor Wilkinson's concerns, I do see some reasons for optimism in here. The overall number is a slight uptick at a time where transit systems are experiencing a downtick. We've gone through a time of tremendous disruption. We've also come through a season, the back to May in June was phenomenally good weather and the city's cycling efforts are working. It's even in light of all of these pressures, we're still seeing numbers that are not bad. One in particular that I would like to ask about is we exceeded by a fair number the number of youth passes that we sold. And I'm wondering if there's an explanation for why that number was higher than we anticipated?
Most of our youth passes are sold to the, to the school transportation authorities for the school boards. Not all, but probably seventy-five, eighty percent of them, maybe even more than that. So those numbers would be based on their enrollment levels, their policy decisions about how far people walk and how they distribute people between schools. So we, I don't have an answer for that. It would take some careful thinking to tie it down to a single source. I imagine it could be done. But it could result from some of the, for instance, it could result from some of the school realignments that the English Public Board has done, which, and some of the smaller schools were closed, more people are traveling. However, some of those effects are only coming into effect this September and it wouldn't have affected the first half of the year. So it's also a possible contributor, that there's more people right now in that age cohort than there, than there has been previously. I don't have that information for you.
Right. And of course, the number reflecting the September changes would not be reflected there yet. I just see, you know, admittedly it may be school board decisions contributing to that, but I see a reason for optimism in that number. You look at any business model, they say you get your customers while they're young. And I think that if they understand and use a youth pass regularly, I think that as those people grow up and stay in the city, it's going to be, people that likely are going to stick with OC Trans though. So I see a lot of optimism in that number. And then, as always, councillor Egli echoed some of my comments too. I'm also tremendously pleased and I'm not sorry that we underestimated the number of Equipasses that we sold, that's some 22,000 passes of people that may not otherwise have been able to be on the system. And I know at the time that we implemented it, there was a lot of discussion around whether or not we had received the price point right. Seeing a number that is robust like that of people that we may not have captured in the system otherwise, says to me that while it may not be everything that lower-income residents of the city may have wanted, that it is a vehicle that is being effective. And I think the numbers that we see there definitely affirm the decision of this commission and of council to have implemented that pass. Those would be my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Crewe, councillor Neusbaum.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to staff for the presentation. Most of my questions have been answered in the meantime. I just had one which related to, and we've lost the chart, but, okay. I just wondered, because you've got the ridership numbers and then you've got this fare information, is it possible to essentially track the fare type with the ridership numbers, if you know what I mean? So could we, if there was another column on this, could we figure out how many of the 48.5 million tracked against each fare type?
Yes, we have that information. That's how, it's using the fare sales that we estimate the number of people who are traveling.
Yeah, because that might be interesting. I mean, it's, it's an interesting piece because it might help us sort of in understanding. I mean, yes, you can make assumptions about, I mean, I could, we could probably do the math, but if that's something you can share, it would be interesting to see that, only to help us understand. I mean, I think the important point that's been made is, you know, we're worried about the adult monthly pass and then the e-Purse, which are both down. We're hoping, fingers crossed, that those numbers will go back up once LRT is online. But just in terms of understanding the metrics and understanding the problem, if we can pinpoint where that problem is, that would be super helpful. Because again, it sounds like you, actually the school boards are buying many more passes. But if that's information you can share, that would be hugely helpful. Thanks.
Thank you very much councillor Clutcher.
Yes, we should please you down. Thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of questions. It would have been useful to have had the number of adult monthly passes that we had sold last year as opposed to the budgeted. My question is, the EquiPass, how many are new riders who have entered or using the system because of the advantageous price point versus residents who used to buy a monthly pass? Do you have any information on that that you could share with the commission right now?
No, I don't. It would be a hard thing to determine with any degree of certainty. It might be possible to look at how many people who already had a presto card came in and had it coded for an EquiPass. And that might tell us a number of people.
And I remember when we were debating the EquiPass, when we were discussing the EquiPass, that there was some prediction, some analysis done of persons who would be using the monthly pass and who would likely switch and some who would be new users. It would be useful. Did you, do, so, and can I ask questions? Is it the right time to ask questions about the work in progress capital report or would you like us to come back on that? I just have a couple of questions. Document three in the, in item one, Chair. In item one? In this current?
If it's in this report, then yes.
In this report, yeah. Okay. This is Q1, Q2 work in progress. And you have certain contractual obligations. Have those, how will those contractual obligations change given the announced delay at the beginning of September of the LRT? And I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of on page one, item, the second one from the bottom, O-LRT transition. There's still a big unspent balance, there's a contractual obligation. How will that change? How can we expect this report to change? And we could talk about bus refurbishment if we need to keep buses on the road a little bit longer. Can you tell us about that?
No, that's a great question, councillor. That is directly aligned to, and I can't remember who asked it at FedCo on a broader corporate scale, and the treasurer and I are reporting back, there's a direction on FedCo, whether the costs and spend rates get affected with the delay. But on, I'll use the O-LRT transition one, that's a bucket of money for a bunch of operational things and changes and things like that. So we will spend that money. And what we're watching carefully is we're plotting out literally as we speak, is there anything, once we know what day
out literally as we speak, is there anything, once we know what, what date we're tracking to for revenue service, we're tracking all of the potential incremental costs that then get put into the equation of pushing that all back to R T G. So when we were tracking the November date, for example, we brought you that, um, uh, that augmented report about how we balanced the budget. That was an all-in look based on going, going to November, so we're going to do the same thing moving forward. So if it, if it costs more and, and we need more resources or less resources, we will adjust accordingly.
And again, just to emphasize what you just said, those are some of the costs that, per the contract, will be looking to R T G to reimburse us.
We will try through all the clauses that we have in there, yes. On that end, you know, a reminder, I don't want to slip into the Fedco discussion, but we're not paying for maintenance and so forth, so there's recoveries there.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Mueller.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, I'm going to mirror some of the comments that were made by Counselor Egli and Commissioner Crew. I think, uh, we're all very happy that the Equi-Pass is working, it's working as well as it is. Um, I know that was important to everyone around this table, but more importantly, it was important to people in the community. Putting on other hats of, of being in the community and hearing from people, it makes a lot of difference, but a lot of people still don't know about this. This is going to grow before it levels out, and I will, I will implore you to please anticipate growth in that for next year, when we start to see financial numbers for next year, because, uh, there are people that are going to want this as it kind of disseminates further and further. Um, I, I, my comments are going to be around just a bit of the frustration of, of coming back here and not being able to celebrate these numbers, and this is a couple of years in a row where we've, um, you know, with varying levels of, of degree, met or missed targets by, by a little bit or a lot. You know, the last time I believe we had a surplus in one of these midterm was when the gas prices went through the floor, and that was fantastic, but, you know, maybe not for planning purposes. Um, you, you mentioned that ridership is, is down across North America and across Canada, and I think that's something, you know, we built in growth in this area, and right now Ottawa has very low unemployment, so we got a lot of people moving around, and we're still just seeing kind of, we're ahead of the pack, but that can change really quickly. So I, I, when we start looking towards next year, let's be very realistic, and this is tough work, and, and the City Treasurer and you guys do a lot of very good work in detail on this, and, and I, I will equate it to the detours. I know a lot of us were, were very nervous around, um, the detours two years ago, two and a half years ago, and I will say that those were as seamless as they could have ever been. Um, I remember sitting next to Counselor Leeper, who was very concerned about the, some of the West End detours, and coming back and saying how well they've gone. So, you know, we have the capacity to do these things well. Um, I, obviously, very happy to see that the ridership is up. Do we know why we are seeing this move from, um, the monthly passes? Because, you know, last year we talked about how people were moving from, um, per tap to monthly passes, and that was the big change last year. People had gone from the purse to monthly passes, and now we're seeing monthly passes to lower monthly passes, or, or not at all. But our ridership's up, so this means that, to me at least, if I'm reading this correctly, that the lower fare classes are riding the bus a lot more on average than they were before. Is that fair to say?
I don't think we have that information to be able to confirm that.
Okay.
Um, that would require more knowledge about the population, um, and who's traveling and who's in the, um, employment market from all of those groups, and so we don't know what, um, what we're doing per, per person in a group. One of the things that does give more certainty in how people choose between a single ride fare and a monthly pass, um, now, then in the past, was the policy decision that you and City Council made in 2016 to fix the relationships or to, to solidify the relationship, the multiplier between, um, a single ride fare and monthly pass, so that it is consistent. What had been happening for the, the previous years was that some years one was put up more than the other in percentage terms, and people who, um, analyzed the numbers and did the math could decide what was better for them and could jump into this category or into that category. And they were making wise decisions for themselves, but it, it also masked seeing, uh, longer-term trends. With the consistent multiplier that's there now, um, that trading back and forth, moving from one type of discount to another, um, is, is much less likely. When people make changes, it's probably because of changes they're making themselves. If they're only traveling to work four days a week, if they're working from home one day, or if they're working compressed work week, um, as they themselves retire, or as the people who've been paying full fare identify themselves as being eligible to Equi-Pass, they can move into, into other fare types.
No, I remember that conversation around the, the multiplier, and I think that that was an incredibly important step that was taken. Um, what I would be interested in seeing, if, if you guys have the data, would be around the number of taps each fare class on average is using, and I feel like, um, they might be able to give that to you, uh, from, from Presto, because if the monthly pass is actually tapping seventy-five times, that's fantastic, but we need to know that, that they're using the service that much. We, we know what that multiplier is, but how much are, is, uh, how heavy are heavy users and how, uh, light are light users? You know, are, do we have people who are using cash fares once a month, um, and people that are using, you know, big fares, seventy-five?
Mr. Chair, that point is spot on. I can tell you that again. Uh, the industry is looking across the board as to what that multiplier is, because people do do the math. They figure out, they go exactly down the path that you're talking about. What's my total cost, do I, if I take it X number of times and so forth? And, you know, uh, it speaks to the reliability, the service and so forth, so they do that math about how many times they're going to use that pass versus going e-Purse and so forth. They have a little spreadsheet, and you crank that out, and they do exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah.
It's all changing, because those multipliers are based in data from the eighties and so forth. So as G M's and C E Os across Canada, we've all talked about, how do we get smart people like Mr. Scrimshaw to figure out what that multiplier is, and how do you collect that data, and you gotta go out and grab it and capture it and so forth? So with transportation planning under my umbrella now, there's a heavy transit influence in what Ms. Chee's going to do on those studies related to the O Ds, the subsets that everybody's talking about, grab as much data and bring that intelligence to the table, because it's easier to grab now. So it'll be a hybrid of taps through Presto and other data that you go out and collect out in the field and so forth.
No, absolutely. I think if, if, if people are doing this at home using, uh, Excel sheets as to what makes sense for them, we need to have that same information here to ensure that we're making the right decisions for, for us. Thanks so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Are there any, um, other questions? You sure? Okay. Um, that the Transit Commission received this report for information, is it received? Received, uh, so we will go to the third item, which we, uh, added. Um, uh, Mr. McConney, I think you had a, a couple of things to say, and then we do have one public delegation who somehow anticipated we were going to add this to the agenda. Um, and then, um, we will go to questions, uh, from members of the commission. Mr. McConney.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, with respect to, uh, the route adjustments related to the L R T, uh, that was, as you recall, was discussed at Fedco. So, uh, we are working on that. Um, we, um, we are looking at, uh, the entire team is looking at what routes were adjusted in anticipation of the, the L R T. Um, and then we are looking at what tweaks can we do to those routes, and, you know, we've heard about them, the eleven, the twelve and so forth. Uh, what can we do with those? And we will communicate back to Council on that, and we'll certainly check in. I know Counselor Neusbaum was asking about whether or not we could sit down with his office and get some ideas. We will certainly do that, um, and others. Um, the, to manage expectations, I want to be clear, um, it, it is those routes that are directly related to the L R T, uh, adjustments, um, there will be tweaks, and we will, you know, we've heard and we've seen, we're grabbing the data as to what the complaints that you've been receiving in our offices have been complaining, and the suggestions. Um, we cannot unpack all of the routes and all of the September changes. That, that involves, and I know because the question's been, you know, why did you do the route changes if you knew this was coming? Route change planning started in early of the year. It takes months to do that, uh, and there are the planning logistics, there are the mapping of the information, there's the contractual obligations with the operators that, that take booking, that's why you receive the September notice change in mid-July. That's when everything's finalized, so it's months of work. Um, so we're not ready to give you those details today. We need a bit more time, uh, and we'll certainly communicate to, to all members of the Council. But, um, so it's going to be a, trying to do that delicate balance of what interim adjustments can we do to those routes that were most heavily impacted, uh, in that regard. So, Mr. Chair, we'll be communicating back to all of Council as we were, uh, directed to do in Fedco. Happy to take any questions.
Uh, uh, thank you very much. We, as I mentioned, we do have a public delegation, so Miranda, I think is here, so, yeah? You've been here before, you know the rules, you got five minutes, and I'll try to flag you down when you've got thirty seconds left.
Sure.
Go ahead.
As some of you know, my name is Miranda Gray. I'm a heavy transit user, in that I have chosen to live in Orleans and work in Gatineau, which means my sixth workday is spent on an O C Transfer bus. It is very rare that I have less than two hours on the bus a day, and frequently on that three. So I would like to make a case about one route in particular. This is the route that services my house, the one thirty. So this is, uh, just some quick facts about this route. This bus route starts before five A M. in the morning. It's frequently used by the riders, uh, sorry, by the drivers to get to the station so they can pick up their buses, and it goes till after midnight. To run the entire route, it takes an hour, and it cuts through the bulk of, well, I guess I would call it, uh, original Orleans, not the new parts up by Innis, but of the rest of the community is served by it. It had very significant route changes on September second. Now, the, it only connects to the Eastern Transit Way in one place, that's past Orleans. It used to connect at Jeanne d'Arc. Now this bus only comes within five hundred meters of Jeanne d'Arc, and you need to walk across the one seventy-four to catch the bus if you are going downtown. And that would be the bulk of the problem. So this is a close-up picture of the old and the new route. The red section is the section that was discontinued on September second. I used to be the president of the community association affected by this, and I am on that route. Uh, you have now disconnected me from my eye doctor and my grocery store. I now, I need to take two buses to get to those places rather than just one. It means everyone in Convent Glen North is rooted towards Blair or Palast Orleans. They cannot get to Innis Road, which is one of the main retail areas in our town, and also a main place where people are employed. The green section is Saint Joseph. This is a new route. Part of it is stuff that's already covered by other routes, but the part on the far left would be new service. And while that is nice, it came at a big sacrifice for the people of Convent Glen. And if you look at where all those push points are, down where the yellow is in the middle, that's the part that no longer has coverage on this route. So where the route turns to blue, that's the old route, and it no longer connects across to the red, which would be your transit way. The new red route continues onto Blair, which was a lovely plan when the L R T was going to open, and will make sense then, but does not make sense, and, uh, to all, all respect to you, Mr. McConney, we had known that wasn't going to happen for some time, so to hear that even in July you were thinking, um, that was happening is, is a little shocking to me. So let me, uh, tell you a bit more about this. This is the official, uh, information notice that went out to people. As you can see, it's a little complex. I have to admit that even though I'm a regular, I missed some of the changes that were going to impact me with this. So the good news is, you've given us better connections to downtown, which is lovely if that's where you're going. Unfortunately, if you are doing grocery shopping, uh, going to school, doing errands, taking your kids to dance or hockey, you're out of luck. The service inside Orleans is definitely worse along this route. As I said, it no longer services Jeanne d'Arc Station, that is a major station. Um, it's on the Transit Way. People come down the, the escarpment on the west side of Orleans to get to Jeanne d'Arc, and there is no longer a connection there. I saw five people jump off a one thirty-one this morning, because they'd also missed their express, to catch a one thirty, to go up the hill, to transfer to another bus to get them downtown. That probably adds half an hour to their time. The thirty-eight is new, and I guess that would be great news, except that it goes to Blair and doesn't really connect you to Orleans. So for all these people in Convent Glen, yes, they have better service to Blair, but they don't have service to their neighbors. Um, they don't even have service to either of our two main rec centers. It does not come close enough, in my opinion, to lug a hockey deck to go to Bob McGray, and it doesn't cover Ray Field either. But they could get to Blair, but there's no rec center there. Uh, you'll see on there, there's a bus thirty-two. I just want to tell you that bus runs every couple of hours, which means it has zero ridership. If a bus comes every couple of hours, and you don't believe the schedule is going to be exactly on time, you're going to plan your route somewhere else, because if you miss that bus, you are out of luck. This made no improvement to the western part of Convent Glen North. Yeah, uh, it's still underserved. Basically, they only have peak hour service, uh, what we used to call express. They don't have regular service. They're forced to walk in, and their main route was the one thirty-one, which is the route that has been changed.
Thanks very much, Miranda. Any questions, uh, for the delegation? No, thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, Pluck has a copy if you would like one.
Um, I believe Counselor Neusbaum, uh, was on the list for, uh, Mr. McConney.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and, um, thank you to colleagues, uh, for agreeing to add this item. I thought it was important just to have, um, a quick discussion, recognizing, uh, that work is underway from staff, um, and just to note that, uh, I certainly agree that in many of the cases, um, the news of the L R T being pushed back, let's say roughly six months, will not necessarily impact every route, and I get that. And in fairness, many of the changes that we saw on, on September second were anticipated. In my case, I can speak about some of the routes that I have an interest, the six, the seven, the eighteen, the nineteen, and the twenty. Um, and one of the reasons they were anticipated is, um, O C Transfer participated in, um, what we called an East of the Ride or Transit Forum in 2017, and, and it was very clear that these were some ideas, and, um, thanks to staff, uh, actually based on the feedback we had from that forum, there were actually some adjustments made to those routes. Um, so that part is great. Unfortunately, a couple of the route changes did not come up at the forum, um, thinking specifically about the twelve, uh, and that's why, uh, the route change caught people by surprise, uh, because it hadn't been something that was, uh, brought up, uh, when we brought transit users together to talk about those, those routes. So Counselor Fair and I actually, um, we've been talking to transit users, including this morning. Uh, we were out, um, chatting with people in anticipation of this meeting. Um, and I think the point that I want to make to staff, and I recognize this is a delegated authority, um, but I do think it's important to, as you're thinking about the changes and contemplating them, to the extent that you can get feedback from riders, and that can be through our offices, or if you can think of other ways, uh, to do that, I think it would be hugely important, because there's nothing like standing on the corner and really understanding the routes. And, and one of the interesting things, just as a quick example, is on the twelve this morning, a lot of riders were saying, yeah, we'd really love the bus to continue to Bang Street in the morning, and for the next six months, winter, slush, snow, rain, et cetera, you can see that being of real value. But other riders said, but at the same time, in the afternoon, we appreciate that things are a little faster, um, starting at Metcalf and Queen. So that's really important feedback, because that might lead you to a solution which is maybe a bit more innovative, maybe it has, uh, a route doing something in the morning and slightly different in the afternoon. Again, recognizing that you also want clarity, uh, for riders. But I guess my main point is I would encourage you to reach out, uh, to those of us who have routes, uh, I would encourage you to reach out to those of us who have routes that have been affected and where you think there is a logic in maybe having an interim solution until such time as the LRT starts. And yeah, the experience that certainly I've had over the last couple of weeks is riders are really smart about these things and they can often come up with great ideas themselves for how to solve these things. So look forward to that dialogue. I guess my one question is, is there, do you have a sense of timing? Because that's a question that's going to come up in terms of when you anticipate being in the space of recommending that to Council.
It's a matter of weeks and the key steps that we have to do is Pat's got to present those tweaks. I think it's about 12 routes that are directly impacted, so we know the councilors that we'll reach out to, we have one of those councilors on those routes. And then also I have to be very respectful, and I'm not saying this just because he's in the room, but the union has been very, very supportive of helping us out on booking logistics and those are all contractual things that we have to respect and so that's why on the tweaks, if there's some extensions and some adjustments or adjustments sort of like what you're talking about, we believe that with our good partnership with the union, we'll get consensus that it's not a rebooking of the work and that way we don't have to open up everything up. If we get into very extensive changes, then it complicates things. So it's a matter of weeks, Counselor, but there's a lot of steps we need to go through and that's why it's taking some time. We want to do it right and we'll certainly check in with the affected councilors.
Okay. Thank you. Just to provide some context, Mr. McConney, when does booking begin for the period following the period we're in right now?
Around October. I'll ask Mr. Chair to correct me if I'm wrong, but we are mapping out all of that vis-à-vis, again, working with the union as to what we're doing now that we have the information that we have from RTG and it's very complicated because we have 300 employees that have been given layoff notices. What are we, are we rescinding those? Are we extending? Are they eligible for booking and so forth? So it's very complicated in that regard, but it's roughly October, mid-October.
And that booking is the booking that begins around Christmas and lasts till March-ish?
Yeah, end of March, April, but again, we need to get from RTG what those dates are and what are we tracking to and what are we giving, you know, we've got to take care of those employees because, you know, it's, hey, the good news is you're sticking around, but for how long and is it for the whole booking and so forth? It's a very, very complicated matrix.
Absolutely. That's what I was trying to get at. So if any of the issues that you're, we're talking about today or from what you've heard are very complicated to unpack in a short timeframe relating to the rebooking for the fall, et cetera, is it more likely that they can be addressed in that next round of booking pursuant to when we might hear from RTG, et cetera, et cetera?
If it's anything extensive that requires a route to change significantly, that it's considered new work, we will have a requirement to open up the booking. So our goal is to stay within the parameters that, you know, Clinton, his executive can sign off and say, yeah, that's not new work, that's just an extension of a route or as Councillor Newsbaum was saying, you know, it ends one block shorter or extends further. If it's those things we can do within this current work, if it's significant, then we'll have to catch it on the next booking and then we're caught in that trade-off. If you know all RT's launching, why would you adjust and then double adjust? So again, it's, those are all the permutations and combinations we're going through and that's why it's taking time. We don't want to give you something and then have to change it a couple of weeks after.
Absolutely. Councillor Kakish.
Thank you, Chair, and John, you touched on this a bit and I just want to get clarification so that the drivers who were given the slips, where is that in the process now? When are we offering them to come back? Is there an opportunity for them to come back for a certain amount of time or where is that in the process of?
So I'm going to ask Mr. O'Connor to keep me in check here. So I think a macro statement is okay, but I'll ask him to, because we're working our way through that. So the macro statement is yes, they're sticking around. We have to work out the labor code, contractual requirements and we're working with our partners on how we do that.
That's absolutely correct, Mr. Chair. We're working with Labor Relations, Legal Services and obviously the operational departments and the unions to discuss what the appropriate next steps are.
Okay. And in terms of the routes as well, you're speaking of what seems to be a selective reversal or return, so can you just clarify why it would be just a selective return instead of the full magnitude of returning to what the bus service was prior to the timeline that we had in place?
So two things. There are a bunch of September changes that occur just as whether you're building LRT or not, plus it's also the dialogue on ridership and capacity and bus types, so that all stays in place. The 12 or so routes that were changed specifically in anticipation where those transfer points were going to be with LRT and so forth can only be tweaked if you start to restore them right back to what they were. That will open up all the requirements to go to a full booking and to unpack a bunch of other routes because you're, it's not just because of the contractual obligations, you're interlined also. So all those routes are connected to other routes and you just start to untangle that big maze and then it's work that needs to be reposted, reconfigured, recommunicated, next stop announcements. Again, I'm just walking through all these things. It's not, it's not, you know, poor us, it's, this takes months because there's interconnectivity to the customer from the next stop announcement, the Facebook, the Twitter, the travel planner, the signs, the bus stop shelters, the maps, so there's hundreds and hundreds of steps. So if you tweak, you can adjust those things. If you start to rip things apart, you're affecting unit lining and all the subsets of the downstream effects. So that's the space we're in. We're into tweaks of those, a handful of those routes within those dozen.
Okay. And in terms of the timelines, as you said, for both on the driver's front as well as the routes, that's going to be within the next few weeks that we'd get a better sense of how that's going to roll out?
Yes, we hope to be in a position that we've checked in with the councilors, we've got all the pieces together that they're justifiable, that it's not reopening up the booking with the collective agreement requirements and then we would communicate to Council within a couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor Leaper.
Thanks, Chair. Obviously Catherine, sorry, Councillor McKenney and myself have spoken to you specifically about the number 11 and I do understand that many of these changes are not going to be rolled back. The delay doesn't create that requirement. The 11 however, is one where we have a very specific problem that is raised as a result of the delay in the LRT line. What, so you spoke about contract bookings. Where are you, sorry. At the highest level, are these changes that you would like to make? Do you know which changes you would like to make if you can or have you made a determination as to whether some changes are not going to be something you'd like to make at all? So I'm scheduled to meet with Pat in the next two, three days. It's an integrated team. His team has given the mission right after Fedco of look at all of those routes, come back and tell me how many were affected directly because of the LRT. That's where I get that number of about a dozen. He's pulled all of the, and that's why some of you have written to me and, you know, usually I'm very quick to respond back to. I'm not ignoring emails. I'm throwing that all into the hopper. I want an unbiased view on it. Him and his team with Mr. Charter have looked at every one of those issues and said, based on what we're seeing, what can we do to alleviate what you're hearing from your customers and what we're hearing from the customers as pain points? And how do we stay within the rules that it doesn't cause us that major opening up of everything? For those dozen or so routes though, do you accept that in an ideal world, you would try to alleviate it? Are you acknowledging to us today that, you know, residents' concerns, riders' concerns are legitimate concerns?
We exist for the customers, absolutely, Counselor. And I've seen every one of your emails and the feedback and I take those to heart and they've been put into the equation and Pat is, looks a little stressed because I'm pushing him hard. It's a tough job that he's doing. And the work within these confines, I'm telling you, this is a very, very complicated mission.
Yep. Are there cost implications to some of the changes that we're looking for?
Thank you. That's the other bookend. We only have X number of buses, we only have X number of operators and it's, I don't have additional funds. So that again is why it's an integrated team looking at that and it's very, very complicated. Even if we did have the money, I don't have the buses, so it's not like we can start doing additional things. So it's a very restricted environment and so I want to manage the expectations today. There are going to be tweaks and we'll do the check-in with you on your route on the 11 and say, look, this is the best we can do and with any good dialogue, perhaps you give us something we hadn't thought about.
Theosophically speaking, if you acknowledge that there are certain changes that would ideally be made in order to mitigate the impact of the LRT delay, is that then something that we can go after RTG for?
I don't know if that's the restrict, I know that's not the restriction because time's not on your side. To unpack and then repack everything, you're months. You're basically be doing everything that you've just done. So in the perfect world, it's go and unpack all those 12 routes, bring them back to what they were before. To do that, we're into, you know, March, April. We're into a rebooking. We're into a recommunication, resetting all the hazardous, resetting all the interlined routes, reconfiguring all that stuff. So I'm trying to demonstrate to you, it's not that we don't want to do that, it's what are all the restrictions that preclude us from getting to that perfect environment? And we do, and I just heard the customer talk about that, I get that. It's, well, I think one of the things that we are going to be looking for, if we're being told that, no, the train will be up and running before we can accomplish the change that you're seeking, and I'm looking particularly at the number 11. We're going to be asking, I think, some hard questions around why that can't be done in time to alleviate some of the winter challenges that we're going to face that is a result of this change. So that is just a heads up for you that, you know, I want to, I'm hoping that you will get into it with not just councilors, but with the public as well, a very detailed understanding so that if you're telling us that we can't possibly jump the 11, that one extra stop because of factors X, Y and Z, that would mean we couldn't do it until after the first quarter of 2019, I think the public is going to want to know and be able to assess whether or not that is legitimate or not. So a heads up for you on that one. I agree with you and I also remind you that, you know, Pat's looked